My name is Eileen J. I'm Chair of the School Committee and I call this meeting of the School Committee to order. With us this afternoon are my colleagues, Deepika Sani, Larry Freeman, Kathleen Lenahan, and Sarah Cuthbertson, and also, as you know, our wonderful leader, Dr. Julie Hackett. This is one of the nicest things we get to do, is to honor all the people, or many of the people, in our school district who are doing extraordinary things. And the honorees today are among them. Of course, there are many people all over the district who are doing extraordinary things, and we hope we get a chance to recognize people over time. So, okay, so we are here because the Lexington School Committee holds Core Value Awards Nights with the Superintendent of Schools to celebrate school community members. And we have a wonderful list of people here that we would like to honor and celebrate. The first of them will be presented by Kristen Gray and Meg Kalella. Come on up. Would you like to announce the honoree?
Sure, I would love to. So, we are honoring Tracy Jansen from Bridge School. Kristen Gray couldn't be here, so I'm going to speak on behalf of Kristen and myself. So Ms. Jansen has taken our school library and transformed it into a community hub over the past three years, then she's been our school librarian for those three years. She has spent countless hours weeding the Bridge collection to donate texts that haven't been in circulation in years, and replacing these texts with books that represent so many different facets of the identities of our students, staff, and families. She has created featured vignettes to highlight authors from many different backgrounds, and also tied these displays to holidays and celebrations that highlight the important days for as many members of our school community as possible. While Ms. Jansen does take time to highlight different racial, cultural, and religious backgrounds in the characters, authors, and illustrators of the texts she features in her curriculum, she also has carefully curated and designed countless activities for students to extend their thinking and invest in their interests through her maker space materials and centers. The library furniture has been switched to comfortable, inviting seating and workspaces that invite collaboration and different learning styles. The enjoyment of books, learning, and creating can be felt at the minute you walk into the school library. Ms. Jansen's efforts to include all types of learners and interests have made library time and the space between scheduled blocks a coveted experience for Bridge students. Finally, we would be remiss to not mention the endless collaboration that Ms. Jansen has fostered and encouraged with staff. She offers to support creative projects with materials, co-teaches digital citizenship with our building DLC Naomi, and co-leads Bridge's equity team. Not unlike the beloved Magic School Bus character, Ms. Frizzle, Ms. Jansen brings a magic to Bridge School that aims to include every community member, every learner, every identity, creating a sense of "we all belong" in the most amazing way. So Tracy, we wanted to honor you for representing this core value of "we all belong," and we're thrilled at all the work you've done at Bridge School to make the library such an inviting and welcoming place.
Do you want to say something?
Thank you very much for this honor. This nomination is a testament to the collective spirit and nature of the entire Bridge School. And, you know, this is a call to action to continue to take risks and take on challenges. So I feel that I'm really just getting started there. So, thanks again.
Thank you and congratulations from all of us. Next, we'd like to bring up presenter Stacy Gaetano.
Do I have my nominee come with me, or do we call her up afterwards? Okay. Do you want to stand next to me, or do you want to sit right there? She's a little shy, you'll understand when I tell the whole story. All right. In a book titled Quiet, author Susan Cain stated that "the secret to life is to put yourself in the right lighting. For some, it's a Broadway spotlight; for others, it's a lamplit desk. Use your natural powers of persistence, concentration, and insight to do work that you love and work that matters. Solve problems, make art, think deeply." You will not find my nominee under the Broadway lights, but her power and passion illuminated -- I'm going to get so emotional. Her power and passion illuminated my class and our team last year with creativity, intellect, and kindness. Lexington Public Schools' core values of using your mind and caring for others, along with several of Clark Bark values including kindness, are embodied by Josephine Lawrence. As with many stellar students, Jo consistently produced high-quality work products that included depth and breadth typically seen from an individual far beyond the skills of a young teenager. Her analytical essays impressed readers with insightful perspectives. A detailed and descriptive poem she crafted moved readers to tears. Once, I asked Jo for permission to show her work as a model to inspire the rest of the class. She agreed to share the content, but asked that her name not be shared. Her humility is one of the ways Jo tries to stay out of the spotlight. But I am glad that others get to see the results of her hard work and gift of powerful storytelling. Throughout the year, our class did much work as global citizens by informing ourselves of significant world issues and taking actions to help make progress towards the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Jo is consistently one of the largest contributors to our service projects, yet she saw the least attention for her efforts. Around the holidays, she brought in several collections of donations that she purchased with her own money. This generosity is embedded in the core of Jo's identity, and her impact as a global citizen and change-maker has and will continue to touch the lives of many fortunate recipients. I could continue to tell many stories of Jo's quiet but impactful contributions to the community, but perhaps most powerful is an unsolicited comment from one of her classmates that was shared with me during a year-end reflection. I don't think you know about this yet. One student chose a quote to encapsulate significant moments throughout the year. "One small act can have a great impact." She continued to explain her choice of theme by stating, quote, "At the start of the year, I thought I would make no close friends on the team. However, one day at lunch, a girl named Jo decided to talk to me about books. It was an incredibly small act, but it showed how incredibly kind she was. So the next day in homeroom, I decided to sit with her. With her were two other girls. We all became friends, and now I consider all three very close to me. This shows that even when I didn't think I would make friends, I still did," and how Jo's -- how Jo's small action of talking to me changed my entire year," end quote. Do you know who that is? You can probably guess who that is. Though it's unlikely, Jo will -- though it is likely, Jo will continue to be her wonderful self quietly in the shadows. I am grateful to have this opportunity to shine a glimmer of light on her, so others can see what I had the pleasure of experiencing over the past year. An inspirational young lady with powerful stories and a generous spirit." I don't know, I am so emotional. I guess that's what happens when you have fabulous students, when you have amazing students like Jo. So I am one of many people who think how amazing you are. So congratulations for everything that you've done.
So congratulations to Jo, who is more formally known as Josephine Lawrence, and we love it when students are nominated for these awards, because it means they are really embodying our core values. So next, could we bring up Chris Wei to present?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am here to introduce Megan Garcia. Megan is a shining example of a teacher who truly embodies the "we all belong" philosophy. In her classroom, her classroom is a safe and warming, a safe and welcoming space where every student feels valued and supported. Megan constantly goes above and beyond to ensure each and every child has the resources and accommodations they need to succeed. While Ms. Garcia gives student, every student, the attention they need, this is really funny because she hates attention. In fact, receiving this award is a nightmare. When she comes up to receive this award, well, she's right next to me, but perhaps all of you should turn your back and not look at her. Mrs. Garcia is a Hastings hero through and through, and she models respect, responsibility, and best effort to all of her students and colleagues. Hastings is so fortunate to have such a dedicated and compassionate educator. Megan's ability to collaborate effectively with colleagues and advocate for her students is truly incredible. Most importantly, she brings laughter and positive attitude to create a joyful and inspiring learning environment for everyone. So on behalf of Hastings, thank you so much. Thanks for being part of it.
So congratulations to Ms. Garcia, and thank you, Mr. Wei, for doing the nomination. Next, we have Matthew Powers, who will be presenting. Oh, okay, I guess we have Amy Jackson helping us out with the presentation.
Hi, we are happy to speak on Jen's behalf for the Core Values: Caring for Yourself and Others Award. For me personally, what was that? Oh, Jennifer Karas. For me, Jen has become more than a coworker, she has become a true friend. There's been too many times to count when I have thought, "Thank goodness for Jen," both professionally and personally. I'm getting choked up now, too. We have been through so much the past seven years, and I know we could not get through it without Jen's support. Collaborating with Jen has made me a better teacher, BCBAs in person. I am deeply grateful to not only call Jen my coworker, but also my friend.
Jen has worked with me and supported me during the best and worst times of my life over the past seven years. I'm proud to call her my friend, and she makes both life and the job so much better. I think it says a lot that no one that I spoke to could manage to limit themselves to just one or two sentences. Jen is truly one of the best people that I know, and I'm grateful to work with her each and every day. Although Amy and I could speak for the entire three minutes about how Jen embodies this core value, we would like to share what her other coworkers have said about her and her commitment to caring for others.
Jen, in such a gift to work alongside, encourages all she works with, including staff and students. She is dedicated to the students and goes above and beyond making sure all students have all they need to be successful.
Jen Karas has made me so comfortable working here. She has made me feel a sense of relief knowing that I can count on her to be there for me when I need her, and I know that she will always lend an ear for when I need someone to listen to about concerns or really about anything. Jen has made me feel heard and safe, and more than anything, I feel privileged to be working as a part of her team.
Jen is the ultimate professional. Her devotion to the students in the IOP goes far beyond the norm. She never backs away from a difficult situation and always diplomatically comes to a conclusion.
Jen really loves the kiddos, and she's always joyful around them. She sets a great example for the rest of us.
Jen always listens to everyone's concerns, from children to the adults that she works with. She makes sure you feel heard and provides feedback that is truly helpful. She also knows how to not take things too seriously and make sure everyone is having fun. There's always laughter when Jen is around.
One word to describe Jen Karas would be superhero. For as long as I have worked beside her, she has been nothing short of patient, understanding, and helpful towards staff and students. Most importantly, she is present. No matter what the situation is, Jen is always willing and available to assist during challenging times with students and answer any questions we might have. My favorite thing about her is that she makes us feel included by taking our feedback and suggestions into consideration. Her dedication to our students never goes unnoticed.
Jen makes bad days better and turns seemingly impossible situations into manageable ones. She has incredible ability to lead, inspire, and remind us why we do the most important work we do.
What can be said about Jen Karas? Everything. This woman goes above and beyond when she is at Diamond. She can be seen going from one corner of Diamond to another corner. The students love and adore her, and it is amazing to see that she cares for the students so much. Jen is a great example of a person that loves her job, and it shows. Jen creates massive impacts not only in the lives of her students, but to those around her. I am grateful and proud to say that I get to work with Jen. Jen rocks.
Jen is a living example of what it means to be a leader. Jen is always making sure that all of our kids are safe and happy, and that the staff have the resources that they need. She does all of this and more by keeping morale high while leading by example. Jen Karas puts everyone above herself and is considered an inspiration to anyone who has had the privilege of knowing her. Congratulations, Jen. We are lucky to be the ones who benefit for your care for others.
Yes, congratulations, Jen, and to all the educators who have been nominated and received Core Awards today, there's no greater honor than being honored and recognized by your peers, because they are the ones who know you best, and it's really such a sign of respect and caring and joy in working with you that they're displaying today. So congratulations to all of you. The next few Core Awards and then some special awards are going to be given by our Superintendent, Dr. Julie Hackett, so I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, everyone. I echo everything that Dr. J just said about this event. It's really touching, and every single time we have one, somebody cries. So if you -- it's happy tears, so if you did, you're in the right place. So I'm proud of everybody here, and I also have the honor of giving a few different awards to people tonight, or this afternoon. And the first is going to a team. So I want to tell you a little bit about the LPS Green Team. I'm going to read it first, and then I'll have you stand up. The LPS Green Team is just a phenomenal organization. I know that the School Committee has been amazed by your efforts and everything that you've done for our schools, and I certainly have, and we have a lot more work to do together. But we wanted to take a moment to recognize you for all of the efforts. And so, for about two decades, generations of Green Teams have been promoting waste reduction in schools daily, especially food waste, through composting, food sharing, and donations. The Green Team, in collaboration with our Food Service Director Kevin Silva, launched a food rescue program in 2020 that allows us to donate food and drinks that are sealed in containers, or Whole Fruit. This doesn't sound like it's a big thing, but if you knew the bureaucracy that you had to go through to get those changes to be in place, it is a miraculous thing. So just amazing that they were able to pull it off here in Lexington. These efforts have allowed Lexington to comply with state regulations to keep food waste from the trash, while helping others in the Boston area through donations. Also, through their efforts, directing food waste to compost has many benefits for the health of the community at large, especially in the nutrient-rich soil which creates more nutritious food for humans and a healthier future for everyone. The LPS Green Team has also been a driver for other waste reduction programs like plastic bag collection, reuse programs to reduce single-use products policies and bylaws to avoid plastic waste, and ongoing education for each student as they move through the system. Ultimately, the LPS's Green Team goal is to educate the students on the culture of waste prevention and reduction, so they can graduate and help spread the word and make the world a better place. They do an amazing job with this. As I said, we have lots more work to do together, and one of the things that I've been thinking a lot about lately, I know the School Committee does as well, is how do we transition the excellent work that the Green Team is doing to what we do every day in our schools? How do I, as a Superintendent, do a better job with these efforts? How do building leaders, how does everyone in the classroom take over this really important work that's about the stewardship of the earth and our environment? So I am really proud to present on behalf of the School Committee and me and everyone in the district, this award to all the Green Team members. You get one award, but you all can come up and receive it. Let's give a big round of applause to our Green Team. If there's any student, or staff member, or other parent, we have many, many volunteers, many, many staff members that help, but if you have been a part of it, if you have done your part, please stand up as well. Mr. DePree? Yeah, students over there, I know, oh, they don't want to stand up. I completely agree with you, thank you. We have more work to do. There's tons more people behind this, staff members at different schools. We have a lot more to do, but we really, really appreciate the partnership, School Committee, and for the district, thank you.
Thank you so much. Here's your award. Thank you for your job. Two awards for you today. Thank you. I just like, you can't.
Yes, don't go away. I just want you to hear this. I was around in LPS at the time that the Green Team started, and it really started by a small number of parents who had a huge commitment to environmental issues. What's that?
Generations, generations, more of us.
And yes, so it started small, and it grew to eventually be in every school. I think it shows so much the ways that schools and parents can partner to achieve something big. It's grown, there are so many parent volunteers who participate at lunchtime and other times around the schools, and the students see the efforts that the parents are putting in and why this is so important. It's educational as well as helpful, and I think this is going to have an effect on many, many, many generations of kids going through our district's schools. And a huge thank you to all of you and all of the past volunteers who have made this happen.
I am also giving an award to someone who wasn't able to be here tonight, but the person is just a really magnificent educator, educational support person in every sense of the word. Diamond people, come up here for a minute with me. So I want you to help me give this award, and I know you'll be able to say good things. And I'm just going to pass the mic. You've inspired me with all of your quotes that you gathered from people. So they don't know what I'm even going to say. I'm putting them completely on the spot, but they are worthy of it, I can tell. So the person that I get to give an award to is a kind professional, poised, and even in very difficult situations, she works collaboratively with everyone and is always willing to go above and beyond. She is an example of caring for others. She has a kind heart. She has sacrificed herself in many ways, which I won't share kind of all the amazing things that she does, because there are too many probably to share, and she would be too humble to probably hear it. She is the embodiment of caring for others. She holds the place together. You know who I'm talking about. Big round of applause for Cindy Kelly. So this is being recorded, and Cindy's going to -- Cindy's going to be able to hear all the nice things we're going to say about her. So I'm going to pass the mic and just a few words, if you wouldn't, pass it on down, please, thanks.
I remember when I started at Diamond, I was completely lost, totally nervous, didn't know what I was doing. Cindy always had my back, and she made it feel like home.
Well, there's too many things to say about Cindy. She is, she really holds the school together, and one thing for us as the Diamond IOP program is that it's such an inclusive environment, the main office, that our kids have so many opportunities to practice skills, be welcome, communication. She just goes above and beyond to make everyone welcome.
If I need to know where anyone is at any given time, I go find Cindy.
I'd like to touch on the IOP as well. Many times, we're running around, sometimes in the morning, and forget to post attendance often, and Cindy is awesome of a quick email or a quick call to the room and, "Hey, you guys all good?" And it's just that, yeah, no big deal or anything, but she really is the best, and we couldn't do it without her.
Cindy, congratulations. Cindy has a beautiful calm about her, and you can imagine in the mornings, things can be chaotic. She never looks like her feathers are ever ruffled, and we really appreciate that calm kindness.
Congratulations, Cindy. I know many times I've been down that office asking the most ridiculous questions. She's always there to answer, and she, just with a big smile. Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Cindy. Similar to Matt, my first day at Diamond, I got lost, and the main office was the first place I went, similar to my years in middle school, high school. And she helped me find my way to IOP room, and I had no idea how to get there. So, thank you, Cindy.
Cindy, congratulations. We are all so proud of you. Thank you to this incredible team for helping with the award. Now I get to do something pretty exciting. So I'll read about the person first, and then I'll have them come up, and then you'll clap with thunderous applause. Okay. Each year, I have the privilege of awarding Lexington High School students the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Award for Academic Excellence. This year, I am recognizing two outstanding high school students. This annual award is given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in their pursuit of academic excellence during their high school career. I'm honored to recognize these hard-working and dedicated young people for their academic achievements and their contributions to their school community. Now I have to put on my glasses, because I will not be able to see what I am reading, so let me do that. Okay, there are two students, and the first student is strong, focused, and hard-working. She's a great collaborator and team player. All the educators who have worked with her over the past four years have witnessed her remarkable growth and development, both academically and personally, and those personal and academic achievements are impressive. In the fast-paced environment of Lexington High School, organization has been a key component of this person's success. Her meticulous use of a bullet journal, that's a new fancy term, I guess, these days, which she has maintained throughout high school, illustrates her ability to manage and prioritize her responsibilities effectively, an important life skill. This organizational prowess has translated into improved study habits and time management, enabling her to excel in challenging courses such as AP US History, AP Art, AP Geography, AP Calculus. Her proactive approach to learning has allowed her to grow from a student who once struggled with group projects to someone who genuinely enjoys the collaborative process. Her curiosity is evident in her love for languages, a passion that has been nurtured since she was three years old. Her dedication to learning French, exploring Latin, and even delving into Polish showcases her ability to engage deeply with subjects that fascinate her. Her family background with her grandmother speaking Polish has added a personal dimension to her linguistic pursuits, allowing her to connect with her heritage in meaningful ways. Her independent research skills have been honed through her self-driven explorations, whether it be mastering the intricacies of embroidery or diving into historical insights offered by old books. Determination is another one of this young person's defining traits. For years, she faced the challenge of chronic visual migraines, a condition that tested her resilience and resolve. The eventual diagnosis of celiac disease and subsequent treatment provided her with some relief, but the experience taught her the importance of perseverance. This determination is reflected not only in her academic This determination is reflected not only in her academic pursuits but also in her role as head of the props department in the school's theater department. She thrives in the collaborative environment of technical theater, where she skillfully balances creativity and organization to bring productions to life. This young person's involvement in the Celiac Digest, where she shares her experiences through comics, highlights her empathy and desire to support others facing similar challenges. Her work at the Monroe Center of the Arts as a camp counselor further underscores her commitment to making a positive impact on our community. Her educational journey is driven by a desire to pursue animation, a field that perfectly aligns with her artistic inclinations and interest in art as a form of communication. Her goal is to attend an animation school where she can build a solid foundation in the field and explore diverse opportunities within the industry. This young lady is an extraordinary student whose unique blend of curiosity, determination, and organizational skills will fuel her growth beyond Lexington High School, and we are incredibly proud of Esme Baldo. Please come up. This person's teachers and counselor are impressed with his solid work ethic, strong sense of responsibility, and humble disposition. He is always engaging in conversations, and his teachers and peers appreciate his optimistic outlook. He's a breath of fresh air in an intense and demanding academic and social environment. This person has demonstrated a quiet determination and a strong sense of kindness that sets him apart from his peers. He describes himself as quiet, determined, kind, and passionate, and these traits resonate throughout his interactions with classmates and faculty alike. His ability to listen attentively and respond thoughtfully has made him a valued member of our school community. Academically, this young man has shown significant growth, particularly in his writing abilities. He has consistently sought to improve his skill, which has not only helped him excel in honors-level English classes and advanced placement US History, but has also equipped him with a vital tool for success in any field he chooses to pursue. His passion for music, especially jazz performance, is evident in both his extracurricular activities and his aspirations for further education. He has actively participated in jazz ensembles, where he has not only honed his musical talents but has also built meaningful connections with his peers. This young man's contributions to our school extend beyond his academic achievements. He has taken on leadership roles within the Temple Youth Group Lefty, fostering a diverse community among high schoolers and maintaining connections to his Jewish heritage. His involvement in the Lexplorations All That Jazz Camp this past summer further exemplifies his commitment to sharing his love of music with younger students, igniting their passion in the same way he has experienced. He has recognized the importance of balance and has recently made considerable strides in connecting with others while maintaining his academic excellence. This ability to adapt and grow demonstrates resilience and maturity, qualities that will serve him well. This young man is currently experiencing all the joys and challenges of juggling college applications with rigorous calculus and physics courses. For next year, he is exploring programs that will allow him to study musical performance in theory, especially jazz, but which also offer broader liberal studies programs. We know that he will receive many offers and that the community he joins will be enriched by his amazing intelligence and kindness. All of these qualities are what we talk about when we talk about redefining success in the Lexington Public Schools. Both of the award winners exemplify these, and the second award winner is, drum roll, William Osto. Please come up.
Oh, I think it's all of us, right? Okay. Yes, oh, yes. This is exciting. We get to congratulate a number of teachers who have reached professional teacher status, who will be joining us on a longer-term basis than they have so far because they've already proven themselves to be a really important part of our LPS community. So on behalf of Dr. Hackett and our entire school committee, I am going to ask Dr. Lyons to come up to join us in the presentations.
I think it's safe to say that there is no job more important than being a teacher. Teachers touch the minds and hearts of our young people, reminding them daily of the importance of joy in learning, curiosity in life, and compassion in all we do. Becoming a teacher is hard work, and it requires many steps. And the steps that we're here to celebrate today is achieving professional teacher status. In Massachusetts, a properly licensed teacher, school librarian, school adjustment counselor, school nurse, school social worker, or school psychologist may earn professional teacher status after serving for three complete consecutive school years of employment in a district. Being awarded PTS is a really important milestone in a teacher's career. It signifies that an educator has continued to grow their craft, positively impacting teaching and learning, and actively contributing to the school community. So congratulations to everyone. We are about to call up front here to join us for reaching this important hallmark in your career, just this fall, actually. And we look forward to our ongoing partnership with you in support of all of our students and to your many years of continued service in Lexington. So first, Stephen Babbitt. We have several folks who have also achieved PTS, but they were not able to join us here today, and I'd like just to take a minute to read through the names to recognize them as well. Ariana Akram, Aziza Alam, Michelle Bilavia, Alyssa Campbell, Connor Cottone, Michael Champagne, Carissa Cho, Laura Fisk, Aubrey Fraser, Meredith Gannon, Shannon Grant, Elizabeth Legan, sorry, I can't see without my glasses on very well, Cara Jewett, Maris Johnnyek, Caroline King, Adriana Kippenberger, Kelly Lawler, Marissa McMath, excuse me, Franz Poliant, Sarah Perez, Rachel Porter, Joseph Quarantello, Stephanie Ringer, Jamie Ruvalo, Michael Spoco, Rowan Sundaram, Cameron Tapatabe, Edward Su, and Jessica Welch. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons, and a big welcome to all of us, those who are joining our LPS team. So before we leave and before we do our final congratulations to all of you, I think we would like to have the honorees and those who nominated them to come up to take some pictures with all of us. Perhaps we can just take groups one at a time? Yeah, just come. If you don't mind, just come, and then we'll have various combinations of people joining into some pictures. So I guess before we leave, first of all, congratulations to all of you who've been honored today. The reason we started these Core Value Awards at the very beginning was we had put out these, a number of what we thought were core values that represent what we do and what we care about as a district, and they caught on. And I think awarding and recognizing people in the district who were really exemplifying those core values seemed like a very important and joyous thing to do. And so we continue to do that, hope people continue to nominate people, students, staff, community members, to be honored in this way because it's just a moment to take away from all the hard work we're doing every day and just giving some recognition and support to those who put in that effort all the time, day in and day out. So I am going to ask all of us to stand up in recognition of all of those who have been honored today. Okay, and thank you all for coming.